Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023, Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. That after our roll call.
Michael Widmer.
President.
Bill Howe.
Here.
Michael Drinkwater.
Here.
John Enlow.
Here.
John Flansburgh.
Here.
Mylan Wen.
Here.
Casey Mensah.
Here.
Chris Melton.
Here.
Dave Solero. Mervyn Wright. Kara Steen. Here we have her for her.
Good. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce our new Commissioner representing the public at large, Mylan Wen. Thank you for volunteering your time. Look forward to working with you. Uh, like in my mind, commissioners, please make, uh, this one sort of money. But when you do make a motion or second, please state the name for the record. Uh, approval of the agenda, please. When orders are public coming? Are there any other comments? And item number three, the approval for the agenda. Move to approve as presented, record.
Enlow, second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 How was opposed? Item number four, approval of the minutes from June 7th, 2023. Any comments? You get that motion, accept.
Enlow, go ahead. Move to approve, uh, Melton.
For second, second. All those in favor say aye.
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 And oppose. Item number five. Action, presentation, discussion, possible direction, staffing, recommendation for the Western Regional Water Planning Commission for approval of an amended scope of work, additional 281,526 dollars in funding not to exceed 670,102 dollars from Regional Water Management Fund to the University of Nevada Reno for the Regional Waste Water Source Control Plan Development Phase Two project asked. This thing.
Thank you, Chairman. Right, right, for the record. Mr. Bernard Lippert Sticks, this is the new room and we just got in here, so I wanted to ask Ken or our, where is the best spot for our speakers to? Would be like to invite him to the table right here, just to have you right here, because the speaker is right.
Oh, thank you. So at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Figuilla and Dr. Hock. Hock, okay. I should know that, right? I get Bill Howe and another house. Like, if you're telling us that Hock and Hock, come on over and join us at the table.
Okay.
And I think much of the commission knows who Dr. Figuilla and Dr. Hock. Please say it out loud, Marty.
Yeah, Hock and Hock.
Okay, H, A, A, K, Dr. Hock.
We've been working on the enhanced source control base two project, and they're going to give a review of the effort and the new scope of work for the amended funding that we're seeking for. Go ahead and.
So then, Chair of Commissioners, for the record, my name is Christian Figuilla, I'm a fellow civil and environmental engineering director of the Nevada Water Management Institute. I read on by my colleague, Laura Hock, a research scientist, a student as well. Uh, today's item on the agenda is, uh, an amendment to an existing project that we are currently doing. Just to give you a little bit of background, um, for the past six plus years, you'll be pursuing efforts to purify wastewater drinking water standards so that we can use it for storage and recovery in the future, intent of indirect portable reuse. And we've come a long way, as you know, many process of designing of facilities in the North Valleys, uh, based on the work that has been done in Sub-Tuck Meadows, as well as Reno State Water Information Facility. And one of the elements of that, uh, project, of the outcome of that project is a regulatory requirement to look at where are some of these contaminants of emerging concern are coming from? Uh, from the collection system, various sources, and how they are coming into the the existing water accumulation facilities, how they might behave in the advanced water purification facility that is being designed right now. Um, so that's what we call enhanced source control monitoring. This commission, this commission of a group and funded, uh, to the Western Regional Water Commission. The phase one, which was looking at best practices to do enhanced source control and how it differentiates from the current source control monitoring that's done as part of the pre-treatment program to protect the existing water accumulation facilities. So we did in phase one, there are four, there were four tasks, basically looking at the regulatory drivers, the end use of effluents of each of the water accumulation facilities, what those could be the drivers for identifying these contaminants as emerging concern, and developing a framework for the whole region broadly classified into three sub sewer sheds. Uh, the North Valleys, which is Reno State and smaller facilities operated by the county, Sub-Tuck Meadows and Truck Meadows Water Automation, which is part of our sewer shade region. So we developed that, those frameworks for the region, the three facilities in phase one. And phase two was to look at a very detailed what constituents have, what methodology is and where type of stuff, and that's an ongoing effort. And in your package, I wouldn't expect you to take a look at it right now, but there is a figure which is called Figure One, integrated tasks and activities of enhanced source control phase two project. In there, you will see the phase one was task one before, in phase two is task five and six. And they are shown in that figure on the top. That's the existing effort on the already funded project where we would develop detailed plans for each of the facilities. Those are still at the planning facility. And then in task six, we will take the data that is collected in the current request in front of you and make monitoring plans that we will develop our report. Like, for example, in the case of Reno State, we will be submitted to the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection to their permit in that, okay? And also, uh, what can we do upstream in the collection system from the users, whether they are commercial establishment or industrial, uh, discharge, I know we do not have industrial discharge, but basically trying to see how we can minimize any of these contaminants as emerging concern. So it's a, it's a regulatory requirement for making this application for what's in part. So under the current task, we are proposing task seven and task eight specifically targeting Reno State Water Facility. So why we are still dealing with those numbers is that task seven and task eight have an immediate relationship to the five and six, and our already funded. So in this, uh, new ask, we will be putting boots on the ground to go and sample the Reno State Water Formation Facility and its collection system. Uh, primarily, we'll be driven by Laura Hock and possibly a student assistant, and we'll be directed by me. It's time to be directed by me. And complimentary to the funding that's requested from the Northern Nevada Water Management Restoration Commission is that the analytical part, when we collect those samples and collect the data, and we send those samples to commercial, certified commercial laboratories, and that involves, uh, significant costs, much more than what we're asking now. And that will be borne by City of Reno and the commercial office. So we will be charged, we will support from the City of Reno and Tamoa. We put people on the ground, collect those samples and establish the frequency of sampling and handing those samples on, on, and then appropriate way, sending it to the commercial lab and get the information. We will process that to put back into the report, the technical report that will go in. It's from a future class. So it's, uh, the ask is this from the commission is for doing, for personnel time and doing the work. The laboratory cost will be borne by City of Reno. So that's basically what you have in front of you, you will be happy to answer any questions you have. I'll go on to, we have the rest of our questions.
Thank you, Dr. Figuilla. I'll ask some questions, or do you want to give me a call or is it?
Well, are there any questions from the commission?
Got a question. You mentioned, uh, emerging contaminants concern. I know that a lot of these moving contaminants do not have standard. They don't have standards, but we know these contaminants are only visible. What is your, when you say see and hear, you talk about use and purpose. But, um, what's the expectation of the impact that these contaminants are going to have to the existing groundwater?
It's a much broader question, right? Like, we have looked into this in the past. For contaminants that are, which are not regulated right now, they are presented very, very low concentrations, and the way we approach that from a risk point of view is that are they at a threshold level where they might be using a safety factor as high as ten? Are they even at that levels? If they are there, we should keep an eye on them. If there are any of those contaminants, which seem like not necessarily reg, they are, that's why we call them unregulated constituents. There are some reports in the technical literature from all over the world, and Laura collected all of that to look at public health risks, uh, and using safety factors, you know, so if, if it has any observable effects at a concentration X, okay, are we even present at one tenth of X type of analysis we did to identify what needs to be monitored? We can't obviously monitor every chemical that is being produced on this earth. So the idea is to take classes of, if you have antibiotics, what are the antibiotics that are prevalent in the community? Uh, if you have painkilling drugs, what are some of those contrast agents? Personal care products, you know, people use for hand washing and things like that. They have trace levels of, of, of these showing up in the wastewater. So we have done a systematic approach right at the early stage, as far back as five years ago. What are these? And then we looked at, at from what other communities are doing that are proposing reuse of reclaimed water. So, um, I believe, uh, the treatment systems are removing them to move to non-detect levels or below any threshold levels that would be of concern right now. Uh, but by, by law, Nevada Division of Environmental Protection, it makes us do this. Okay, go and look in, if, if you have detected anything, find out where it is coming from. And you tell us what effort you made to do that. And if it's detected during your monitoring, what are you going to do in the future? If you need to control them to even lower levels?
Any further questions? Bring the back to the board, any discussion from this commission? Any notes and, like, to entertain a more.
Commissioner Flansburgh, I would, uh, move that we, uh, the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission forward a recommendation to the Western Region Water Commission for approval of additional 281,526 in funding not to exceed 670,102 dollars from the Regional Water Management Fund to amend the regional wastewater enhanced source control monitoring phase two as proposed.
John Enlow, second. For both, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Item six, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Presentation on the National Water Research Institute Independent Program Review of One Water Nevada Advanced Purified Water Program at American.
Straighten.
Thank you, Chairman. Right, the record, I'd like to introduce Dr. Lydia Teal. He was right to give us a presentation on the expert panel and report recently submitted on the treatment train for the this is, yeah, I think so, yep. Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I'm Lydia Teal, I'm from Tamoa. Um, I work on a lot of the American Flat Advanced Purified Water projects and, um, and you can go to the next slide whenever, okay? It's, but I'll talk to this first. Uh, so we've been working collaboratively Tamoa and City of Reno, for most of you, as you're familiar with the American Flat Project where we are, um, produced. And David.
Maybe I'll ask you a million questions.
But we are, um, currently thirty percent design for an advanced purified water facility. Uh, we did years of piloting at Reno State leading up to this and, um, very much a group effort. And so what I'm presenting on today is we have the National Water Research Institute. This is a national group of experts. Uh, they grab experts from all different, um, types of water wastewater purification and we go. Perfect, I am, yeah, if you go to the second slide, that'd be great. Thanks, Jim.
Welcome.
Perfect. And so NWRI, it's really scientists and technical experts in the field of water wastewater purification. And, and what NWRI does is they go out to different utilities and agencies working on water projects, and they offer an independent kind of unbiased technical opinion, and they give recommendations on and support of projects. So, uh, it's really good to have a group of experts be able to sit back and look at projects and give their unbiased opinion. And so they have worked on a series of advanced purified water projects throughout the country, um, in several states, several in California, Arizona, Colorado, Florida, Virginia, Washington, just to name a few. And so we wanted to add Nevada to that list, and so we brought on, um, this is the current panel, so we brought on a panel back in 2016. These panel members change based on where we're at with our project. And so in 2016, when we originally had the indirect portable reuse regulations on the next slide, um, there we go. Perfect, thank you. So in 2016, the region One Water Nevada began collaborating with NWRI. And so the purpose of that was looking at the category A plus regulations. Those are suitable for indirect portable reuse. And so bringing in experts from California who worked on California's indirect portable reuse regulations to provide, um, advice on how California did it, and experts just in the regulatory world to provide feedback, provide assistance to NDP and, um, offer support. So that was when NWRI first started with the region. We moved forward with pilot testing with the advanced purified water, and they provided approaches on the treatment train selection, how we are operating it, pathogen reductions, um, the unregulated constituents, they provided us kind of what's the industry safe guidance level of where the technology is at now and where is a safe, safe level for public risk. Um, they provided outreach and communication support on what other communities are doing for outreach, public outreach, because that's a huge component. And there's a hydrogeologist from Southern California Utility that's on this panel that offers support to the Tamoa Hydrogeology Team. And, um, really just all of these experts are coming together to provide the best available information on the emerging, um, subject matter. And so just to give you a review of recent meetings, again, 2016 is when we started with them. That was originally, uh, we were starting with Washington County contract. That contract moved to NNWPC, Western Regional. And so these recent meetings were under that NNWPC contract. So in September of 2022, we introduced the full-scale American Flat facility to our expert panel and went through the proposed treatment train. There were some variations from the pilot study, so we wanted to work with them and make sure that these changes, um, were still satisfactory. And we went through our pathogen reduction requirements that the state regulations require and worked through that. We followed back up in December 2022. We updated our LRV approach with some very good advice from the panel. And also, we ran pilots in 2022, so we gave them that data before we presented it to NDP. So it's kind of really nice to work with them prior before going to NDP to submit our findings or submit our approach to really get their feedback. And then once we're all on the same page, it's just very beneficial to have their support. So then in January 2023, we had a physical meeting with our expert panel and NDP down in Carson. And we again went through our approach, our proposed treatment train. And we really wanted to sit down and say, hey, before we start design, this is a very expensive product, project. It's going to take quite a bit of time to design. We know it, NDP can't give us a stamp of approval at that point, but let's talk and, and kind of get a verbal, like, you're moving in the right direction, and we're in support of this. And so that's what happened, having the panel there again was instrumental in providing feedback and saying, well, their results are very similar to what we see in other utilities. Uh, we support this project and, um, we also discuss the future timeline and what's required for permitting. So that's where we're at now, contracts done with that. And so then on the next slide, I'll talk about, um, the future meetings that we have. So we're currently looking at now transitioning that contract to a Tamoa City of Reno. Now that we are a lot more focused now on American Flat and we're moving towards, um, construction, where prior it was more so a whole, uh, with the piloting, with the, with the, um, regulations. It's kind of more of a regional approach, and now we're very specifically focused on the American Flat facility. So we have a series of future meetings in September. We plan to sit down with our panel and go through our permitting plan and our approach, just to bring them back up to speed and update our timeline with when we start construction. October, sit down and go through our initial approach of our unregulated contaminants. And they are aware, we've gone through this with years, but now we want to sit down with them again and make sure that our plan is sound. And then in November, really dive into how we're operating. What if we have off-spec water, what are we doing with it? What are critical control points in our treatment process where if there's a, um, sensor that's reading high, that there's water qualities not meeting our goals, what is the plan? So we will be sitting down with them to vet all that out and provide all that information before going to NDP. And in January 2024, we'll provide them with a draft of our permit for them to review before we submit at the beginning of the year. And so that really is, yeah, you can go to the next slide. That really is, uh, a wrap of what NWRI has been working on in the past, what we're working on in the future. Uh, but kind of segueing to even the next agenda item is Mark Mulan is going to be talking about some outreach efforts. And so I want to touch on this as part of this effort, part of this permit, we're required to have a public workshop um, for the American Flat permit, A-plus permit. And so in order to do that, we feel that we want to have some informational meetings leading up to this. We want to get out a series of times and not just have one meeting and call it done. So we'll be having a few informational meetings, uh, it's on the calendar. We just put it on the calendar yesterday, so we will have outreach and public noticing coming soon, but the first one is August 29th. And the second is October 5th, these are six to eight P M. at the Reno State Airport in the Freedom Terminal. So, um, any of you are welcome to join. Um, so this will be kind of a presentation style where we come up, have a presentation on the project, open it up for Q and A, and then break where people can then go around to different tables with subject matter experts and learn more and ask questions and have more one-on-one conversations. And then the requirement by NDP for the permit is to have that public workshop. So it'll be the same format, November 16th, at the same place, same location. Um, we'll just be taking written comment, it'll be recorded and provided with the permit application. But other than that, you know, Mark, that segues to his, when he's going to be talking about this on the next agenda item. But that's all I have, just wanted to give an update today of specifically kind of the panel, what the panel is up to, not necessarily where the project's at.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, therefore, item number seven, presentation discussion and possible impact to staff on water reuse conferences and advanced purified water facility site visit opportunities.
Thank you, Chairman. Good interview. I just wanted to make a, Dr. Teal, for conversation. Chairman and members of the commission, get to hand the mic over to Mark Malon. Everybody's familiar with Mark Malon, he's our One Water Nevada Communications Outreach Coordinator. He has contacted the R U G, I got assistance to the regional partners. And we have been asked, staff has been asked by the Western Regional Water Commission, I'm really impressed with the site visits that, uh, data instincts Mr. Malon provided last year in January, February, and they wanted to know what we have for the future. So this is one of a couple of probably, um, presentations or development of these sites so that we can make sure we have what the commission's preferences are and make those recommendations to the R U G. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Mark to give a presentation on some of the conferences and site visits, he's been brainstorming for us.
Thank you, Kim, and, uh, welcome, everyone. Thank you for having me today. I'm going to try and share my screen here. And Kim, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, great. So as some of you may recall, that earlier this year in, uh, January and February, we had a chance to tour various facilities in Southern and Northern California. And I think it was very rewarding for people to see and listen and hear from other project, um, leaders that are, uh, doing advanced treated water. And I think it was a really, a good opportunity to hear some of the new trends and to learn how they're communicating with their public. So we wanted to, uh, suggest for this coming year a couple of conferences that could potentially be attended by, by staff and also electeds. The first one coming up is in, um, California in Palm Springs, it's the Water Reuse Statewide Conference. And that's in early November. The second one I'll talk about briefly here is the National Water Reuse Symposium, which next year will be held in, uh, Denver in March, starting on March 10th. So first of all, the one in Palm Springs will highlight various, um, topics with a, quite a focus on potable reuse. As you know, um, or you may have read that, um, the State Water Board has just released new regulations, or draft regulations on direct potable reuse. So that's a step beyond indirect potable. This is literally going, uh, to direct potable reuse right into drinking water systems. So we'll probably hear a lot about that as well as other topics regarding, uh, funding opportunities, uh, some panel presentations on various aspects of, uh, technical aspects of purifying water. And of course, public outreach. And there will be some special sessions that are crafted specifically for elected officials. Now, in this particular conference, there is no tours to any facilities. There's no close by potable reuse projects in the Palm Springs area. So they, they really, there isn't, uh, somewhere we could all go to while visiting this particular conference. However, in the, let me see if I can get this to work. In the one in Denver, they, um, Denver, interestingly, Colorado is the first state to adopt comprehensive direct potable reuse regulations. So that just happened a few months ago. And, uh, so though I'm sure there'll be talk about that at the conference in Denver, as well as, uh, opportunities to see what is other people doing around the entire country. So the first one I mentioned is California-focused. This one is, covers projects all over the United States, and there are quite a few potable reuse projects. Um, surprisingly, in many states you wouldn't, uh, normally consider, you know, beyond Florida, Texas, Arizona, uh, California, there are other states that are contemplating potable reuse projects. And in Colorado, there, there are two tours available. Uh, Aurora Bines Treatment Plant and also Colorado State University's Spur Hydro Tap Project. So I'll briefly, um, talk about those for a minute. The Pioneer Treatment Plant is a drinking water treatment plant that's actually been in operation since 1967, has state-of-the-art facility with two separate treatment trains. The first uses conventional conventional treatment process and uses mountain water stored in the Aurora Reservoir. Then the second step is from the South Platte River, uses a multiple barrier process, filtration, aquifer recharge and recovery, ultraviolet light, coupled with advanced oxidation and biological activated carbon filtration. So then, these waters are combined together. And this tour would provide an opportunity to have a close look at this project and talk to people who've been operating it for some time. The next tour is probably really similar to what we saw at the Albert Roblo Center in Southern California. It's a large facility that includes a laboratory, museum, classroom space, and it's used also as a lab for Denver Water. It has a pre-K through 12 educational programs and exhibits. So it's quite an educational facility worth looking at. You see here, it looks pretty modern, pretty interesting. And the outside has gray water catchment that uses that water for irrigation outside there. So these are two different tour opportunities that could occur if if folks wanted to go to the conference in Denver. In addition to that, we contemplate that we could arrange at either one of these conferences, special meetings with various general managers or other staff from other facilities. If if there was interest in talking more discreetly with some of these folks, maybe for coffee or for lunch, we could find opportunities where we could arrange such meetings. We also, two other options that might be possible. One is visiting Pure Water San Diego in the San Diego area. Probably accommodate that in a one-day trip. They are still in construction for the full project, so it's not operational. But their demonstration site is fully operational. I know a couple of you have been there and they do allow you to see the various steps on how they purify water. And at the end, you're able to taste the water, which is which is nice. The second one is the Water Tower, and that's based in Georgia, just outside of Atlanta, about 30 miles from Atlanta. And that too would be quite an interesting place to visit, very dynamic, new, lots of research and opportunities to see what's happening around the country and probably around the world from different people who contribute to the studies there at the Water Tower. So those are a few opportunities. Kim and I wanted to present these to you and get any feedback from you of where you think you may be interested in either one of the conferences or both of them or seeing one of the facilities. I I also recognize that some staff who weren't able to go to the earlier visits this year to like Pure Water Monterey or the Albert Roblo Center or Pure Water SoCal, those are also things we could consider as well. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Kim, since she's in the room there, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mark. So what staff is hoping for from the meeting is for one that is discussion and for many board or comments or feedback on what your preferences are for the different field trips. And then we can start to develop those field trips, we can start to develop the budget for them, then how the attendees can go based on the cost and start inviting folks to go. And Mark will be able to make arrangements, events at the conferences he wants to make. He was thinking of making some special arrangements for special lunches or meeting with other managers of other facilities so that there could be some meaningful conversations for leadership. So I'll turn it back over to the commission for comments and maybe some preferences. And and then Mark and I can take that information, also present this to the Western Regional Water Commission. We want to make sure that what we're presenting to the Western Regional Water Commission is also something that this board has preferences for as well, so that we don't have conflicting preferences. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the
Yes, comments, question, question, Mr. Inlow.
So I think I've been to both of the conferences before, then Mark mentioned. I I try to go to that National Water Reuse Conference every year. And because I think it's really one of the best conferences put on in all of the water industry. Very good for, I think, technical people to go to. There may be a little bit too much for elected officials. Maybe there are certain aspects of it. Mark, maybe they have, I know they have public outreach sessions and things like that that are sometimes very interesting to go to. I heard nothing but just super positive feedback from the two different field trips that you did last year to Southern California and the Bay Area Monterey. I mean, the staff and elected officials that went on those trips came back, I think, very well informed and had a much more positive view of potable reuse in general. And I thought that was very encouraging. So unless there was something really specific, Mark, at those conferences that they could benefit from, I'd look closely at their agendas and see what's there. But personally, I think those tours were much more valuable.
Yeah, thank you, John. I do know that the the final agenda for the Denver, the national conference is not yet set. So we wouldn't know that for a few more months. But I think of the two conferences, if we were going to consider a conference, that's probably the one I would think would have the most meat on the bones that would be helpful to people. But other than that, I agree, the tours that we had were very personalized for our group and the different staff spent quality time with us to address questions from the group, which I thought was very helpful as well.
I know that we discussed the tours opening up to other years.
I see John has his hand up.
I can't hear, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I was just saying, I think we've had previous discussions about opening up the tours, not just for the planning official members of the DRC members, but other elected officials on other boards, as well as directors from the public health and possibly NDP. Are we still, because I know many of the commission members went on the previous tours. If we were to schedule those tours again or look at going to San Diego, because they're close and it's easier to think to schedule those, were we still thinking of broadening the invite? We have, when Mark and I spoke, we have, we have to keep those trips, you thought could get a little bit, you could have too many people there. We get above 12 to 13 invites. So I guess what I wanted to try to also figure out is, is there a specific audience that we want to try to tailor this to and bring them to these site visits as well? To, I think the idea was to broaden the, you know, the afterthought messaging and understanding beyond just the boards that we work with.
But Washoe County District Health, their director.
I would add that these, whatever was decided on is super helpful to new members, new elected officials in particular, who are just getting introduced to concepts related to advanced purification. I think it would be very helpful for them, especially in the months ahead as we, as these projects, you know, as the project evolves in particular. I see John Flansburgh has his hand up, Kim.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I do think that it'd be helpful. We do have a few new elected officials on both the councils and and commission. And I think the Pure Water Monterey Facility Tour was really helpful. And that might be a good one to target for our new elected officials. And then I am interested in the Water Tower as a potential tour as well. I don't, we can decide what the audience for that would be, but I agree with John Inlow's comments as well on the conferences. Thank you.
Are there some commissioners that are interested in these future tours?
Always interested, but just another comment, we were talking about Washington County Board of Health because the American Flat Project is part of the A-plus permit application. We actually need a letter of support from the health with our permit application. And Tamaulipas and Reno are reaching out to the Board of Health members, actually had some discussions with them today and with Jennifer Carr today as well about what they would like to see as far as background information in order to be able to provide that letter of support. We've had certain staff members, David Kelly, involved in that process so far. But I think reaching out to some of the staff and potentially some of the board members and making these tours potentially available to them too would be helpful.
I think it would be very helpful.
That's great.
Thank you.
So I think what I'm hearing is that, can I know on the conferences, not to prioritize the conferences, maybe just give them information, background on the conferences, but really focus on a couple more site visits that are, where we broaden the invite to Director Kelly and some staff and possibly books in EP as well as members of the mission that didn't have, we need to go, is what I'm hearing, is that?
That's my take on it.
Good question.
Yes.
So where's the commission at as far as, you know, I can't get into this. What do you mean? We're looking at that as objective, right?
The direct potable reuse?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so I know we're looking at different designs and investigations and that's sort of, as far as regions, we're looking at wanting to potable reuse.
So, I mean, I could comment on the design status. So we're basically at 30% complete design for Reno State. That 2 million gallons a day that would treat water and recharge it in the aquifer at American Flat. It's probably a seven-year process, plus or minus, to get to ultimately using that for potable purposes. There's a lot of commissioning and proving it up and public outreach and regulatory approvals and so forth. But Reno State is really the proof of concept that the treatment process technologies that we're planning to use are safe and reliable and appropriate.
So are you clear, Kim?
I think so, I think that gives us the direction we have to make. Put together the logistics of, you know, the number of trips of the projects. I've heard Pure Water Monterey, they like the Bay Area focus, that would be a multi-day trip. So we'll put maybe one or two trips together with the same tours and on the team. All, is is kind of what I agree. And I'm going to, it's kind of my theory. If you get more. If I captured that, we're good to go.
Any other comments? Moving on to agenda, A, Program Manager Report, Kim.
Thank you, Chairman. So just a couple of updates, if you want to turn your attention to some section AA and AB. At NAP and AA, as we've seen it plenty high before, and updates on the projects. I provided the updates through the end of this month, year twenty-three, because our financials update doesn't do, there's still outstanding really, there's more work in the community that those projects get built at the end of July, they go there. So there's a few outstanding that are made for some of the processes, but this is the final balance on our projects. I did recently get information on the Buffalo Water Usage Review Program in this year twenty-three, they performed one thousand four hundred and seventy-one water review or water usage review sites. So that was great to hear. Also, the Nevada Landscape Association facilitated the twenty twenty three annual trade show conference. I'm not as familiar with that conference. I can give you a bunch of details, but they had four hundred attendees and said it was a really great turnout this year. Excited about going through those water conservation practices with selling irrigation systems for that night. So that was exciting to hear. I also wanted to let you know that we are working closely with checking those regional planning and agency on that shared work program. And we've been having them assist us with giving our website and logos a facelift. And I've been having Jen and Beer get work with their staff over there. We've gotten to some final drafts and they look great. And I'm hoping to bring those to you at our next meeting. Some comments on on that. So I'm excited about that. And TMRPA has been really helpful, helping us with that. So that's been ongoing work that we're doing with TMRPA. Nevada Water Innovation Institute recently held their Partnering for Impact event on July twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. I believe Commissioner Steel and Commissioner Drinkwater and Commissioner Flansburgh and myself were all present. And it was a really interesting event. And there was a lot of discussion and presentation from leadership on, you know, the different generations in the workforce and the challenges that that poses. And multiple partner, you know, multiple partner agencies working together on very broad scale watershed projects. And I, it reminded me of our group. Our group is kind of this natural multiple agency working group. But it was really important we were how other communities bring together their partners and some of the challenges that they face, as well as workforce development. So there was some interesting discussion. It was primarily presentations of the different leadership experiences in those areas. So I thought it was a great event about Water Innovation Institute, Innovation Institute. The Stormwater Permit Training Committee, I promised that they would come over to give a presentation to us. Unfortunately, their staff has been on vacation, so they couldn't make it. I'm hoping to get them at the next meeting. I do promise that that is forthcoming. I also wanted to comment, Chairman Whitmer, on the North Valleys Water. And even though this is not in our budget, we do host, we are hosting the North Valleys Water Improvement Open House events. So it's going to be a series of events where the residents of the North Valleys would be informed on ongoing water projects in that area. And so the first one was on June twenty-second. I'm gonna cheat at my dates, because I got so many dates on. And that was from six to eight PM. The different various water topics that were presented to the public were obviously in the long water Nevada and the Astrofied Water Facility and the Reno State Expansion Project, Swan and Summer Lake Fly Action Plan, Scoble Valley Artificial Recharge and Swan Lake Base Flood Allocation Risk Assessment. So those were the topics. There were tables around the room. I had an open house file where the public come in, talk to different staff in the agency. We had a good turnout. There was, I had a sign and shoot, but not everybody signed in. So I think we had about twenty to twenty-five residents come in. And I thought it was really successful. There was really great interaction with staff. Director Smith was there, I was there, Director Fisher Enlow was there, and Director Matthew from the City of Reno was also there. So it was a really great showing from leadership. A lot of good conversation in the room. Wanted to leave that open for comments from others who had attended the Partnering for Impact for the North Valleys events, what their thoughts were.
I just had a question. Is there a second North Valleys water event scheduled? I heard conflicting responses.
Oh, well, that's interesting. I've been talking to Director McGoon, and I think that she and I had talked about October being the timeframe for the second one. I don't know what any of her, that is. I think originally, that was original. I think it was, yeah, an original date.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so October is kind of right. And that's what I have for the project timeline. So if there's any other questions, then happy to take questions on any of the projects. And the financials, fourth quarter financials are attachment needs. And I just wanted to highlight that we started with a cash balance of two million dollars in the bank and we're ending with a cash balance in this year twenty-three with two million three hundred and forty-six thousand. So we are doing very well financially. And we have plenty of funding in this year's budget for those contingency fund projects. I thought that was certainly great, we could do it to the big quality of that funding for projects. That's been successful this year. But there are any other questions on either caution A or B? Misses or comments?
Thank you. So another question, so Agenda Item Nine, a session regarding the patient possible with agenda item for the upcoming and the non-impairment intervention, also directions now.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the commission, at this point, I'm working on two agenda items for the next meeting. We have the Cold Springs Water Balance go to work and budget to bring forward. I'm working with Director Smith on the schedule for coming and presenting that to the commission. If he's not available in September, we might have that and have addressed the board in October. I was thinking it would be a really good idea to have him do that in October, because October is also our priority setting workshop. Me, he likes to give updates on projects and relax with the budget. And we can go through, I was thinking Teresa may not be available in October also for the Teresa Jones, who manages the Stormwater Permit. They may not be available in September to go on the storm guard. So if it's admirable to the board, if we end up not having agenda items or if there's anything that the board wants to bring up for the September meeting, I propose that we not hold a September meeting, schedule those presentations for the October meeting that they're priority setting workshop and continue those discussions at that time. I'll turn that over to the board.
Oh, commissioners have any agenda items that they would like specifically for month of September? See none, then we'll move forward with our next meeting in October.
So that'll be October, boys. And then I also wanted to remind the commission that the event first will be on the card evening with the Western Regional Water Commission. So we'll be bringing the results of the party setting to that for the elected officials at that time. We'll have a lot.
Sorry. So we've received public comment a number of times regarding the American Flat Project and the potential for TDS accumulation in the aquifer. It could be October, it could be later, it doesn't matter really when, it's not urgent. But we have done an analysis of that. Dr. Greg Poole, our principal hydrogeologist, Tom Waugh led that effort. And we would be happy to come present the results of that evaluation at some point in the future.
For October.
I'm sorry.
October.
Sure. If if the agenda can accommodate it. If not, it can be later.
That's three presentations plus our, our setting. Okay, it's a long meeting.
November is fine.
Okay.
Or, okay, we can let, at some point in the.
Or we can do a set.
No, thank you.
So are we clear on this agenda item then? There's no meeting September?
No meeting September.
October, we have priority setting, other agenda items. Then we'll move on to Agenda Ten, Commissioner comments. See none, staff comments?
I do have staff comments. So first, I'd like to welcome the commission. We're really excited, it's very busy staff, it's very exciting, we've been working with such a amazing and informed technically and managerially wise, Mr. Sir. So we're very excited to have you on the board. So welcome, thank you. I also wanted to inform the commission today that we have a special guest to our audience. Ms. Barrett Lee is a student of Nebraska Curry studying Astral Physics. Mrs. Lee graduated from Nebraska High School in Gardenville in twenty-two. And at that same time that she graduated from high school, London graduated with a degree from Western flat college. And she was attending college at the same time she was taking her high school. She is an impressive student. Ms. Lee recently contacted me to see if she could job shadow me for a project at the university that will help her to graduate with, in an honors, with an honors degree. I get that right? And this project is to provide her with the opportunity to see how STEM degrees are applied in the real world. So I was super excited to have her. Commissioner Steelman made some great arrangements for her to visit the Chopla Facility where Darren Rundman was amazing. He gave an amazing tour of that facility. And so we really appreciate the time he took. And he gave us, I think, that VIP tour. And I also wanted to thank Commissioner Mansour, who gave a personal tour of Tom Waugh and Commissioner Drinkwater for taking time out to speak to our students that way. Mrs. Lee was very grateful for all the tourists and she wanted to come today and observe how we run our meetings. And I was hoping we'd have him in the chamber so she could see the more, you know, committee setting.
I know this is more incoming.
But she gets to see how the meetings are run today. And Mrs. Lee is sitting behind everything, you know. So I just wanted to welcome her today. She really appreciated that it's all of our practice and she understands that. Really did take some time out to help her learn a little bit more about the leadership. So thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks for learning about how this commission works and just how many people you guys serve. This is really awe inspiring. Just makes me excited to get out there and do what you guys are doing.
Be more like you.
That's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
The public comments, okay. There, there.